Six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board and is a public meeting. Prior notice has happened, place in district and additional copies reported to the city and town Cedarburg as well as the news graphic and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I am a United States American, and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognitions. This evening, we have two recognitions. The first is a proclamation to be read by Ms. Strobel regarding Summer Meals Week.
The state of Wisconsin has issued the following proclamation, the week of June nineteenth to the twenty-third of 2023, the Summer Meals Week. That's the only one.
All right, thank you. The second recommendation is the high school spring sports recognitions by Mr. Hammond, our high school athletic director.
Good evening. I'm excited to share the individual accomplishments of our spring student athletes. And before we get into that, just wanted to give a brief update on our extracurriculars. And if you take a look up here, aside from our student safety, we pride ourselves on our participation. So you see this last year, we had a little over eleven hundred students at CHS, and we had fifty-seven percent play at least one sport. And sports are not for everyone, we all know that. And we have over forty clubs at CHS which we pride ourselves on, and then we have an excellent fine arts program. And you see that we had fifty-four percent participate in at least one club or extracurricular there, okay? So we've been tracking this data since I've been athletic director, and this is my sixth year. So we have eighty-two percent of our students participating in some form of extracurricular activity, okay? And that's held steady. It's above other schools in the area that I've been able to get this data from. And if you look at the external factors of club sports and other things out there, jobs, whatever it may be, this is something that we're very excited about. And if you look on the right-hand side, just some other data I want to share with you. You know, we have a lot of students that are specializing, and we have two-hundred-and-sixteen students that are playing two sports, forty-four that are playing three sports. And then just looking at extracurricular, and again, this encompasses everything here. We have four-hundred-and-six students that are participating in two extracurricular activities, and the last one I find pretty neat here, we have eighty students participated in four extracurricular activities. And getting into our recognitions here, starting off with baseball for first team, we have Sam Moses, honorable mention, we have Brett Torbeck. And then also for honorable mention, we have Colin Ellers and Tyler White. And then going on to softball, which they had an excellent season. They had a heartbreaking loss in the sectional final, this is a picture of them when they won regionals. We have Cassidy Gallo as first team, Ally Goddard and Ally Torbeck. And second team was Sarah Prom and also Megan Life and Aleke. And then our coaches have just done an outstanding job with their program. If you saw when they took over the program, they rebuilt our youth program and everything, and now we're one of the best programs in the state. So Mark and Jeff have just done an incredible job, and they earned their one-hundredth career victory this past season. Moving on to girls lacrosse, which will become a WI sport here for all conference. Second team, we have Abby Sandler and Emily Robel. And then for honorable mention, we have Zoe Kunic, Samantha Clump, and Zoe Sheik. And then for honorable mention, we have Katherine Johnson and Katina Zemrashid. And then boys track and field, for first team, we have Woody Burrell. Also first team is Gabe Olson, and then first team joining him is Raven Schumacher. And then second team, we have Brandon RuPaul and Max Gabel. And then also for second team is CJ Sheddler and Jack Alar. And then for girls track and field, we have Jenna Rush, Jillian Billsborough for second team, and then Eleanor Schrader and Avery Peterson. And then a tradition many of you are familiar with here, we parade our athletes that advance on the state around the school here. So you see, the girls have their T-shirts on here, the boys, I don't think they have theirs that day here, but they get their T-shirts too. And then you see who is state bound there, which we have Avery, Jenna, and Woody, and then Charlie and Gabe. And then you see a lot of Charlie on here, she is taking over our record board, and she is quite the impressive freshman and an even better just individual and student, and you know, we're very happy to celebrate her. And then girls soccer, again, they've just had a tremendous run here, the second year in a row they've advanced the state. We have a picture of them after they beat West DePere up in Pulaski. So for first team, we have Talen Noble and Jackie Stever, and then for second team is Mia Hurd. And then also second team is Courtney Van Ermen and Peyton Watzel, and honorable mention is Nadia. And then there's a picture of the girls there, they all have their shirts on here, and this is a practice right before they left for state. Okay, and then for boys tennis, for first team, we have Dawson Frumming, Chatten Hawes, and Keenan Hawes. And then for first team doubles, we also have Grant Shipley and Carter Fast, and you have a picture of the boys here right before their parade. And then Keenan and Chatten just had an unbelievable season, and they had the best finish in the program history, okay? So that was fun to celebrate, watching them at state, they just, they're very talented, impressive to watch. And then boys golf, we had for second team, we had Owens Bazaar, and third team, Philip And then some other recognitions from our coaches that came after, obviously, the winter sports season and fall for Brian here. Brian was inducted into WFCA Coaches Hall of Fame, which is an incredible accomplishment. And, you know, on a personal note here, I played for Brian and coached with Brian, and he's just had a tremendous run here, and has had many successful seasons. And then we have Dave Ross, who was recognized by his peers for the coaching achievement award by the WBCA. And then Nick Miller, who is our head boys basketball coach, again, was recognized by his peers and will be coaching in the All-Star Game, which is coming up here in a few weeks. Just want to share those accomplishments. And that is all of our recognitions here that I have to date. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Great year, another great year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Consent agenda? All right, with regards to the consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. Mr. Farner, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you. This evening, we have some resignations and some contracts for approval. The resignations include Brittany Ward, Megan Manning, Katherine Elsburn, Laura Keller, Jack Brooks, Kristin Kalenowitz, and Joel Cohn. The contracts we're bringing forward tonight for approval are for Abby Lord, Karen Stanky, Joanne Mertens, Laura Morgan, Gillian Myers, Sarah Popowski, Joseph Schmidt, Chad McFarland, Claire Pankwitz, and Karen Thima. We'd ask for the approval at this time. Been busy.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion?
I just had a comment here. So we know the end of the year, there's individuals that leave our district, and I certainly can't comment on all of the names here, but I did want to just make a note that we have had individuals that leave the district and come back, and I'm hopeful that anyone that has decided to leave our district leaves that door open when those circumstances are permissible and right. So just to comment on seeing the many names that have come before the board over the past few months, and knowing several of those individuals, and how impactful they are to our community as a whole.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll put the motion before you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Any objections? Cast your hands.
Thank you. All right, this evening, I will be providing two updates of my report. The first update is in regard to the ESER III Grant Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. Per federal requirements, the school district must review their safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan every six months through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I would like to report that we have reviewed our current plan and feel that it is adequately meeting the needs of our students, families, and staff, and that we will continue to use this plan through the duration of the ESER III grant requirements. Second, as I'm sure you're all aware, the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year has come to an end. The last day of school for students was Friday, June ninth, and the last day for staff was Tuesday, June twelfth. On Sunday, June fourth, we conferred a high school diploma to two-hundred-and-seventy-six Cedarburg High School students. This was an exciting event which marked the culmination of our seniors' high school careers. During the ceremonies, we heard excellent speeches from three seniors, valedictorian Tori Bogensholz, salutatorian Jacob Miller, and senior class president Andre Ovai. A couple of worthy notes to point out regarding this year's graduating class is that they received over three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships, donated seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-six hours of community service, which, if they were paid minimum wage, would have earned over a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. And there were two appointments to the service academies, one to the Naval Academy and one to West Point. I'm sure all of you will join me in congratulating our seniors and wishing them the best in their future. Last week, I also had the pleasure to share the stage with the mayor of Cedarburg and town of Cedarburg supervisor, Tom Esser, at the Chamber of Commerce Snapshot Community Breakfast.
Takes us to public comment? There was no one signed up, is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I don't have to read that big display. Add to recommendations.
All right, this evening, we have fourteen recommendations to present to the board. The first five recommendations will be presented by Ben Irwin, Director of Business Services, with the first one being with regard to the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four general insurance renewals.
Thank you. Each year on seven-one, our insurance renews for the district, non-employee benefits mainly, so we're looking at it as being the property auto insurance, liability, workers' comp, all those different coverages. For this year, we saw an increase of about thirty thousand to our insurance renewals, most of that being driven by property insurance, and that's the result of the market that we're seeing nationwide with construction costs going up and with more claims across the country. On our end, we haven't had a claim in over five years, so nothing we can really do to control that.
I mean, that kind of would.
Right. So, and we were kind of expecting that our insurance broker was, you know, hinting that that might go up as a result of the market. The good news is that cyber has remained flat for this year. If you remember the last couple of years, it's been increasing, doubling over the last couple of years, so that's remained flat. And workers' comp went slightly down, that's our largest line item in this renewal. Our mod continues to stay low, the average is one point oh, we're at point eight-five, so still doing a good job there. So overall, no major changes as the property driving up a little bit. At Personnel and Finance Committee meeting, we did have a conversation regarding deductibles, decided to keep them as-is for now. So at this point, we're looking for approval for the renewal for seven-one for our insurance.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any objections? Cast your hands.
The next recommendation is regard to the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school fees.
Another annual topic. This year, we look at renewals for the upcoming school year for school fees that we have, registration, athletic fees, parking fees, kind of all those major ones that we charge during registration process. Overall, the proposal for next year, most of them remain the same with two exceptions, increasing the high school athletic fee from seventy-five dollars to a hundred, and increasing the corporate insurance fee, which is optional, from nineteen dollars to twenty-five dollars. Both of those are being driven by inflationary costs, and both those departments, obviously, increasing costs for technology, and then also increasing costs for the athletic department and what they're receiving. At PNF, we, John Hannam provided a kind of an explanation and a presentation about all the different areas that are seeing increases on his side of the budget, so we are looking for approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four school fees.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four school fees.
Second, any discussions, questions?
I just wanted to make sure we pointed out as well, we're increasing the family cap from three twenty-five to four hundred as well, correct?
Yes. Any other? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any objections? Cast your hands.
The next recommendation is regard to the twenty-two, twenty-three budget amendments.
So this is a process we can do at the end of the year as we kind of wrap up the fiscal year. Obviously, October, the board approves the budget for the fiscal year, and then as we go through the year, buildings and apartments make revisions within their budgets, just kind of moving money around and stuff like that. We also make revisions at the district level regarding grants that we may see, or just adjustments for revenue we have incoming. For this year, we didn't have too many revisions, we just kind of, most of it's accounting for updating amounts for grant claims that we had for Get Gets Ahead Initiative, and then also Common School Funds, just making sure we're counting for that for what we're expecting. The budget revisions don't reflect actual activity, we're going through that process right now as we start the audits and then finish up the fiscal year, but please kind of take note of some of the larger items. The bottom line, there's no change to that, most of it's just internal changes from one account to another.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
There's a motion to second, approve, all those, sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Cast your hands.
The next one is regard to the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget.
As we get ready to start the next fiscal year, which starts on July first, we presented preliminary budget to the board for approval. Obviously, like we've spoken to in the past, there are a lot of items that are still outstanding. As we go into fall, we'll have the enrollment count, state aid finalized, tax levy, all those different pieces still outstanding. But at this point, we're kind of starting to finalize the budget, get ready for positions that are going to be posted for next year, and then also compensation commitments as well. The good news is that over the last couple of weeks, we've gotten updates at the state level regarding the byneal budget for next year and the year after that, and it's worked out in our favor in that we'll be able to, or actually, we're projecting a balanced budget for next year based on the assumptions we've built into the budget. In board docs, you see kind of a breakdown of that estimate and major line items that have an impact on next year's budget. Personnel and Finance Committee has been going through this budget for the last couple of months, talking about some of these bigger items. And even though we're balanced, we still have pressure points within our budget that we'll continue to discuss. But the good news is that we can commit to some of our compensation pieces though we wanted to, and also have a balanced budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Obviously, a lot more details will be ironed out over the last couple of months as we prepare for the October budget hearing for the finalization of the budget. But the good news is that we're now projecting a balanced budget for next year.
I would make a motion to approve the preliminary budget. I will second that.
Discussion?
I just have a quick note. Ben, my vote is not a reflection of the work that goes into this, but for item twenty-one, there's community questions about what that entails and the, what we have potentially allocated for salary on that. So I'll be abstaining this evening because I don't quite have enough information to make the best informed decision on that one. I recognize that's within the scope of what you all can do, but I'll be abstaining until I have more information on what that position looks like.
Yeah, for those of you who don't have a copy of it, it's a special ed coordinator position, has replaced in the current psych position, so that's going to be assisting with management of IPs throughout the system. The estimates are, the numbers I have in there currently are estimates, it's supposed to be presented as a cost-neutral option, so it's a little bit higher now because when I build in an estimate for a new position or a new kind of rule being filled, I kind of projected a worst-case scenario, so it could come in less based on elections for benefits and stuff like that, so. But we're happy to answer questions, really excited.
No, I appreciate that, I'm just sharing with community input where I'm at, and again, I recognize a tremendous amount of work goes into this, but until I see a bit more on that, I'll be abstaining from this one.
I just have one. Ben and the Personal and Finance Committee, thank you for all your work. When we started this quite a while ago, we were looking at quite a clip, so when you're now presenting a believed-to-be balanced budget, that's a lot of work and a lot of time that has gone into it, by everyone on that committee and by you, to get us to that point, and I really appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah, I think that day, I think Jared and I had a sigh of relief, because you're looking at that, so it puts us in a better spot. Like I said, we still have pressure points in there, but we're not looking at, you know, what do we have to cut to balance our budget? It's more of how do we kind of relocate resources to make sure we're continuing our very successful program, so.
And I know our administrative team put a lot of work on that also, so thank you to all of them, and make sure they know that, because it's impressive, because it looked really bad a year ago. So I'll put the motion before you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention.
All right, and the last one for these five, for Ben, is the high school's bull dog cat base space, and taking a look at name and signage.
Yep, so it's an exciting project we have going at the high school level. We've been working with high school students for the last couple of months to get this area really engaged and find a way to really get students involved, both from curriculum aspects and also just kind of, kind of a work experience perspective as well. We have limitations in terms of, you know, how we can serve food and beverages within the program in a public school district, but Airmark's been great to work with in terms of kind of managing that, being creative of how we can do that, but also involve the students to engage in the space and really make it work for them. We worked with, like I said, a handful of students to really kind of get it going, and as we kind of went along, it's just involved more and more students, where we have different programs now with the business program, the reach program through special education, just finding different ways to really get students involved and get something out of it for them. We're not looking to turn a profit from the program or anything like that, it's really based on a curriculum aspect of that. We're bringing it for you tonight because there's a policy related to naming of an area and logo and branding for that space, so we presented in board docs what that logo looks like. The logo was designed by high school students, voted on by high school students, so it was a very collaborative effort there, and the name kind of went the same lines too in terms of kind of really student-driven. So we had a soft opening over the last couple of weeks of school to kind of get going with the space, get comfortable with it. We saw a little bit of activity, it was really just an hour before school to kind of see how it worked, but over the summer, we reassess and then kind of do a full launch this fall, where, you know, we're going to have it more open, not only before school, but also during the day too, so students can engage with it. And we're working with high school administration to make sure it works within their schedule and it's not a distraction, but actually a benefit for the program overall, so.
I'll make a motion to approve it, is I? I'll second.
Questions? Hearing that?
Should I turn it around so people can see, since our screens are down? Yeah.
I'll put the motion before you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Cast your hands.
All right, the next recommendation will come from both Mr. Irwin and Mr. Hammond. Hannam, regarding the high school varsity baseball and softball sponsorship agreements and signage.
Well, we've been working on these sponsorship agreements for a while. John's been speaking to the project overall in terms of the fundraising for it and also getting donors to commit and actually fund the project. Project's been a hundred percent funded privately from these donors and fundraising, so we're pretty excited about it. These sponsorship agreements are related to advertising on our spaces and also commitments for a ten-year term for each one of them, so that's why we're bringing it forward tonight, somewhere we did it for the football turf. But all of them have been reviewed by the Building and Grounds Committee, we showed some mockups or like, kind of images of what it may look like, it's all within the theme of the kind of advertisement or logo branding that's been done throughout the district, so we didn't see any concerns there, but pretty excited about these agreements that have been set up to help fund the project.
I think Ben covered everything there, and right now, we're, with your approval, we're hoping to move forward with the project in mid-August here.
Motion to approve the signage and sponsorship agreements.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Motion to second, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Cast your hands.
The next two recommendations will just, okay, I'll pause.
Yeah, just one pause. Just thank you to all of those people who are sponsoring and bringing all that money into our district, like with the football field, on baseball. We have a very generous community, and thank you for putting that together, and thanks for all their support. Sorry, go ahead, go.
The next two recommendations will be presented by Conrad Farner, Director of Human Resources. The first is in regard to the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Professional Educator Employee Handbook.
Thank you, this is the time of year when we make recommendations for handbook updates for the following year. These are the same changes that we reviewed at the PNF Committee earlier this month. The, really nothing substantive on these changes, the Cobra language clarification is purely a clarification on the, how Cobra is used and followed. It's a law, you have to follow the Cobra law, there's not any flexibility with that. We do have some questions every now and then where employees separate, and then like a year or two later, they come back and ask, can I still get Cobra? And we want to make it clear that you can't do that, you got to do it at the time of separation. The extra duty pay is a funny one, we made this change a long time ago, but it just never made it to the handbook for some reason, so I just wanted to make sure it got into the handbook and got clarified. I think we did it when we made changes for the support staff pay a number of years ago, but we've been doing this one for quite a few years. The teacher class coverage pay is one of the more, it looks like a bigger change than it really is. We want to boost the pay a little bit for our teachers because there's such value in our, being our teachers covered for each other when their substitutes are so short supply right now, and so we want to bump that pay. The biggest difference is we want to pay them hourly, whereas before, you can see we've had kind of that complicated seventy to ninety minutes, sixty to seventy-five, forty-five to fifty-nine, thirty-one to forty-four. That just created too much weird scenarios and constant having to go back and check and say, what should the rate be, what should the rate be? It's just so much cleaner if we just make it an hourly thing, and then they'll use TrueTime to clock the time, so there's no question, it's just going to be far more efficient, far more accurate. The stack of paper ones that Lisa's getting in the payroll office right now is just not a good way to be doing things in this time. Many of our teachers already use TrueTime, so it won't be a big adjustment for them, and the ones that haven't, we'll just have to train them this fall and make sure that they understand, they're familiar with how to use it. It's not complicated, there's multiple ways you can access TrueTime, shouldn't be a big deal at all. And then some clarification about how the non-classroom teachers wouldn't be eligible for that kind of substitute pay because they're, it's really based on the employees that have to give up their prep time to teach, that's the ones that are eligible for that. Then there's some personal day clarifications, again, it's really not changing anything regarding the personal day benefit. We wanted to be a little bit more clear because every year, questions come up about, is that personal day, is that not personal day? And so you can see some more explicit things, some of the examples being close family member weddings, legal proceedings, graduations, moving college-age students, those are all appropriate reasons for taking personal days, and so we wanted to make that clear for people. We added emergency to the title just so that people understand that that's another appropriate use for personal days as an emergency, and really, everything else is just clarification, semantics, it's not changing anything in our practice, it's just making things more clear. We are looking at an attendance incentive again, we talked to the board about that a couple of times over the last few years, that'll come to you later, July or August sometime with more details on that, but we're also hoping that by rewarding and incentivizing great attendance, that will also minimize the need for subs, which I would argue is a better strategy, is if you don't need the subs as much, then you have less reliance on them, obviously, and certainly it's better for our students the more our teachers are in front of it. So those are the changes, there's also some rationale that was provided to you with the background information, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to second, any discussion or questions?
For the, for the class coverage, do you have an idea, Conrad, of how often our psychologists, counselors, instructional coaches, library media specialists are being called in to cover those?
The coaches have been quite a bit at the elementary level, the other ones have not been used very often, if at all. Yeah, it's very rare, we really try not to, but the coaches have definitely helped out at the elementary schools.
And what's the rationale in not including the?
We're just, we just want people to be able to do their regular job as much as humanly possible, because every time they're in a classroom, then they're not getting their normal things accomplished. And the coaches just know the students, they know the teachers, they're the most familiar with the curriculum, they're probably the best equipped to be in there and provide good substitute services.
So is the rationale for them, for them not being part of the group, receiving the thirty-six dollars per hour, that they're not a educator in the sense of their, you know, contract versus not?
They're not giving up prep time, they can be flexible and adjust their schedules.
And it's got feedback, I assume, from our principals and all that?
Principals, yep, principals have all reviewed this.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll put the motion before you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Cast your hands.
Thank you.
All right, the second presentation Conrad will give is regarding the teacher and administrator contracts to replace teachers and administrators who resign over the summer.
Sure, not much of a presentation, just an explanation. We do this every year because at this point now, when we're hiring over the summer, we often will get veterans from other districts who have to get released from their contract with their current district. our contract approved, so that it just pushes out to the end of July, and then really bad if it pushes out to the August board meeting. So for many, many years now, we've had the board just give the administration the approval that any contracts we offer, they are pre-approved. The board has approved them. Still bring them back to the full board for a vote, but this way, I can give the assurance to veteran educators from other districts that this contract is good when we issue it to them, so they don't have to wait to resign and officially be on board.
And it's been very effective.
It's helped us in a number of cases.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I just had a question on the, just global term of administration or administrator, because I just, I guess would question if, say, our superintendent decided, I'm done here, that we're just giving permission to hire, you know, give a contract to someone without board approval or seeing it. So I guess I understand from the teacher's side of it and maybe certain administrators, but I guess I question just the word administrator.
It certainly was not meant to include the superintendent in the past, so if that, clarifying that would help. That would be great. It truly is building-level administrators, mostly, where a lot of time, if you're getting a new assistant principal, they're currently a teacher, so they have that same dilemma. They're under a teaching contract, and sometimes you do get a principal that makes a lateral move that's already an administrator, and they also then have to be released from their contract, so that's why we've always included them. But we can certainly change that if the board would like to clarify it or exclude any certain position.
So would you say building-level administrator?
I'm trying to think of the scenario for a central office administrator if it would be an issue. We can make anything work. It won't be ideal. I could see scenarios where we would be hung up on something by not being able to do it right away, but it's got to be something the board's comfortable with, so you could say any level below the superintendent, then we're really, then I'm more comfortable, but if you prefer to just keep it at the building level, then certainly we can work with that.
Any thoughts from anyone else? Sorry.
Can I put anyone under the superintendent?
Yeah, can the recommendation just be to approve teacher and administrator contracts excluding superintendent, and then that allows for anything other than the role that the board principally hires?
Are you considering principals coming in?
No, no. I mean, I even think if Ben would decide, I mean, I just, I think there's very critical positions here that I just feel giving a blanket approval, and I hope that if that's not needed, but if that really, that that could be reaching out to us and somebody like that, saying, hey, this is, right?
Yep.
Evidence of it as superintendent would be then, so I think we could do it. But I agree with the superintendent when that could be a problem.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we actually hire the superintendent.
The intent originally was teachers only, and then we actually had it at principal or building-level administrator to have this experience in the summer, and that's why we did include that, so we will, we can work with either option. If you want to go below the superintendent, if you want to go building-level administrator, we can make it work.
I mean, I'm personally more comfortable with first building-level administrator because I think the board is pretty flexible if there is an, you know, an emergency that we would come in for a special need, but that's might be dead on it.
I'd agree. Yeah, I agree as well.
So what's your suggestion?
Teacher and building administrator contracts to replace teachers and building administrators?
Yes.
I made the motion. I'm okay with that. Does anybody object to that? The motion now belongs to the body, so I'll definitely second it. So it's been amended to read what you just said?
Teacher and building administrator contracts to replace teachers and building administrators who resign over the summer.
Good? Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass your hands.
Thank you.
The next recommendation is to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Solient Speech and Language Contract. This is a contract that we entered in this year when we needed a little support for our speech and language program. We anticipate needing similar support for next year.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Question? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass your hands.
All right, the next recommendation is for approval for the district's Education for Employment, or E for E, plan. This is a plan that the district puts together that helps ensure that we're following the state statutes related to ACP, Academic and Career Planning, all the way through for our elementary, middle, and high school students. This was something that we did a presentation on during the curriculum.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussions?
Just a quick note that I did attend that meeting, and the feedback that I shared was that I'd like to see a bit more information for services that are offered to our students with IEPs and 504s, and I feel confident that that's been taken on board by our superintendent and care of, so I look forward to seeing more information on that for next year's E for E presentation.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass your hands.
The next recommendation is looking for approval for the new high school AP Environmental Textbooks.
And that was also presented and recorded.
I motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass your hands.
Another one that was also presented in front of the Curriculum Committee, and that is the Cedarburg High School trip to France during the spring of two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve? I'll second.
Discussion? Glad we got some feedback on regional, but I still don't know what regional really means, so with that, I am going to be voting against it. Not that I have it. It's just the whole safety thing of putting someone in someone's household. I'm not sure what that safety check is to make sure, but as long as it's put out to the parents, at least the parents that can accept that responsibility, but I didn't really know what the answer to a regional test is. So I'll put the motion before you.
I have the same, I have the same input. I was hoping to see a little bit more on that, so my, without that, as you all know, I vote with as much information as possible, so I'll likely abstain from this one rather than go no.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention? So pass it.
All right, the next recommendation will come from Brian Braxma with regard to the facility use fees for the coming future.
This is in regards to our facility use fees. We're increasing the cost to better align our rising utility costs, goods, services, and just how much it costs to maintain our facilities. So with that, I'm just looking for approval of that, of the costs.
Do you have an example of, like, how much they increased at all? Like, did you pick out a particular topic or item on here and be able to tell, you know, what the past amount was versus the new increase?
It would really depend on the category. For our lower categories, we really tried to not raise those too much. Most of those are nonprofit groups, groups where we have coaches that run a camp, something like that. Really, it's the category five, the for-profit groups that aren't necessarily affiliated with Cedarburg. Those saw the greatest increase. The rest would be, you know, maybe we went from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars for a rental of a court, so they didn't see a huge increase, maybe twenty-five percent.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Questions, comments?
I was just going to say, there was some detailed explanations in the meeting agenda for the BNG, so you can go on there if you want to find out more specifics.
Yeah, I, I feel like the attachment that the board has here and that the public can see it is great. If anyone wanted to see those differences, you could go back a bit and take a look at that, and Brian, I just really appreciate the care that you take in presenting things very clearly, and we're really fortunate to have your eyes on a lot of things.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Pass your hands.
The last recommendation is for the acceptance of donations to the district. The first donation is in anticipation of approximately fifteen thousand dollars to be donated by the Cedarburg High School PTO to be used to update the teacher's lounge in the high school. We're asking for this donation to be pre-approved so that as the PTO receives the money, they will be able to begin work. The work in the teacher's lounge is segmented, so we do not need all fifteen thousand dollars to start the updates. There was a presentation of this during the BNG meeting also.
Motion?
I'll motion to approve. I'll second.
Questions, discussion?
I'm just a member of the high school PTO, and I guess I've donated some of them at Hepstate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have a question, Laura, when you were, when you were saying that, something came to mind. Do we have a timeline for how long this project will take? So my thought process is if we have parents that are middle school parents or board members, anyone that wants to contribute to this, what the timeframe is, if we would all be abstaining potentially, I want to make sure we're, we're not in that position.
Sure, no. So they're hoping to get it done quickly. I've asked, you know, they're not really sure how long it's going to take to receive fifteen thousand dollars. They've, they've started to receive a fair amount already, so they're ready to start, so they're hoping not too long.
Would you say their goal is completion within two years?
Oh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And on that note, you know, middle school parents do not have to wait. They would gladly take your money.
Right.
Okay, I'll put the motion back before you since there was one person that did that, but all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
The second set of donations are in support of the Cedarburg High School softball and baseball turf project. We have received two thousand dollars from Glenn Kinnison, two thousand dollars from the Jepson Brothers, five thousand dollars from Laboud Group Incorporated, and fifty thousand dollars from Randall Grove. The total donations for June is seventy-four thousand dollars.
Total, I didn't do the year.
Yeah, the total board-approved donations for the school year will be six hundred ninety-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll move to approve that.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously, and thanking to all the donors. Takes us to committee reports, Building and Grounds Committee.
So we, we've covered three of the four agenda items, which were facility use fees, the high school teacher lounge update, the high school varsity baseball and softball sponsorship agreements and signage. So the only thing that we discussed was Brian presented a really nice detailed capital assets condition assessment, which really looks at, you know, the assets that the district has, and I think there were some kind of warnings that a lot of our, and I can't speak from a building standpoint, but HVAC units and so forth. I mean, they're getting to the end of their life. So I think the biggest point that we took from that is we just really have to be cognizant of everything that's coming up and using that Fund Forty-Six as much as we can, and also finding that delicate balance of, you know, do we repair something and hold out for two, three years, or do we totally replace it? So it's just, I think, an ongoing issue we're always going to have, so that's my report.
Curriculum Committee, most of them were covered here. We also had social studies, textbook conversation, and we have another meeting coming up where we'll continue that discussion. Personal Finance.
So we had a few agenda items. Most of them were covered here tonight. I had the general insurance renewals, school fees, budget revisions, preliminary budget, and the professional staff handbook. The only item not covered was we did do a budget template review of Cedarburg Performing Arts Center, the Summer Academy, and the comments we had on.
They're both included, Jared. The next thing is so.
I will make that motion.
Motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, thank you.